Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the Portage County Board to order. Roll call.
We have everybody here today. So we have twenty-two supervisors attending in person, two attending remotely, and one vacant for a total of twenty-four.
Good to see everybody. Thank you. Pledge allegiance. Or pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all here safely today. Please lead us with open hearts and open minds as we do the work of the people that have elected us. In your name, amen.
Approval of February fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes. Motion by Supervisor Dubek. Seconded by Supervisor Gussel. Any corrections or changes? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondents?
Twenty-twenty-one Portage County Library Highlights and County Clerk Upcoming Meetings and Reorganization.
Number five, presentations. Sheriff Lucas has two minutes. He wanted forty-five. I told him he could have an hour after I adjourned.
I'm glad he was five minutes. I'll take that. Put this. I'll talk to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you haven't had a chance, I hope that everybody looked in their packet and was able to review the annual report. For those in the galley back there, it's on our Facebook page or on our website and also on the on the cover there. So you can look it over. And if you have questions, anybody here, feel free to always reach out and ask me. Some of the highlights I'm just going to touch on because again, hopefully you've had an opportunity to review. And if you have questions, you can ask me at the end. You can see some of the big pictures this year or last year and this year. Grant funding has been very good for us, just so you're aware. You'll see down below where it says on the horizon, it talks about the federal government, federal grant that I wrote. We were approved last Friday for six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. No match. That is for body cameras and in-car cameras. So that was thanks to Amy Su Verlink, who notified me an hour and a half before deadline that I was able to get that in and scramble. And so I maybe should be a grant writer. But you can see that we also implemented the law enforcement software last year. We we went to Motorola Flex and we are in the process right now of finishing up. They are they're live right now and we're working out some of the bugs, but everything's been going good. We also had several important equipment purchases through donations through the community. So we appreciate that and it increases or helps our officers out on the road for safety along in the jail. You can see this year on page four, we put in the injuries and use of force. I just want everybody to understand in regards to the injuries, that does not account for any of the loss of days for COVID, for quarantine and also for isolation. But you can see that last year there was eighteen reported injuries in the sheriff's office in our five divisions. And with that, we had a loss of eight missed workdays out of those. Then you can go underneath in regards to the use of force. Through the state of Wisconsin, we report this every year, but this is something that I added in regards to, I think it was Supervisor Johnson asked me for this. So in regards to the use of force, just reading down there, it says any use of force besides handcuffing is documented and reviewed through our review board and also by law. So you can see for patrol, there were a total of seventy-one incidents throughout the sheriff's office. Twenty-eight were in patrol, forty-one were in the jail and two were in SRT. Now, if you look over on the left, you'll see that in contrast, the deputies issued four hundred, four thousand five hundred and sixty-five citations and made four hundred and twenty-one arrests. And there were twelve hundred and ninety-eight subjects booked into the jail for the jail population, which is supervised on an average daily population last year of sixty. So that that goes to show you in regards to how our sheriff's office can communicate. Because that that to me is a key indicator in regards to the use of force. If you turn to page eight in regards to the patrol section. Realizing that the sheriff's office patrols eight hundred and ten square miles out in the county. We also consist, there are seventeen townships, ten incorporated municipalities, ten unincorporated villages, and the population of the county excluding Stevens Point is about thirty-two to thirty-three thousand now. We are the main law enforcement for the county, unlike some of the other counties surrounding. We have three law enforcement agencies, Stevens Point, Plover and the sheriff's office. So it is quite different when you look in contrast to Wood, Marathon, Wapaka and Wachira and Adams, because there's a lot of smaller municipal police offices compared to Portage County. In addition to the regular duties that our deputies do, you can see some of the specialized training that they do on the bottom of the page, just to name a few, the field training, search and rescue, special response team and so on. They they take a lot of extra responsibilities on when they they come on the sheriff's office. And that's, I think, why we get a good pool of people applying for the sheriff's office. Oh, and if you haven't heard, today was a big announcement too. The governor announced Portage County Sheriff's Office also got eighty thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for recruitment retention for new officers. So fifty million dollar project that the governor put out. So we are seeing what the stipulations on that is, but that is through the governor's office today. The next page, you can talk about our canines. Deputy Dan Wohviak and K-9 Yet retired last year and we we took applications. And we have a real strong support of our K-9 and we have a lot of guys that want to do the K-9 program. Deputy Jeff Sattlemeyer was selected and he went over to Josephine in the state of Wisconsin. And he picked up his dog Indy, who is now active and doing very well. Also, we have Deputy John White, who is doing K-9 with a lady who, this might be her last year. So we are out soliciting again for donations for replacement of canines in the near future. So our canines are extremely, I mean, if if people give money, they're going to give money to the canine, not to an officer. So I will tell you, they love the four-legged creatures. So they do an excellent job. And as you can see, with our patrol this year, we did have a reduction in in what I would say active patrol due to COVID, because we couldn't bring a lot of people into custody and we were quarantining and doing some things a little bit differently. But they still managed on page eleven in regards to creative activity for the K-9 unit. Our community resource, our school programs were slowed down in twenty-one because some of the schools did not do some of the counteract, alcohol resistance and drug programs because of in-person and not having outside agencies coming in. We are in full swing again. I will say that the schools have been very receptive and our new our school resource officer is doing an outstanding job up there. You can see some of the the amount of students on page thirteen that we service in regards to our programs. Let's see here. Talk about our detective bureau on page eighteen. We have a four detectives, one drug officer and a supervisor in the unit. Last year, even during the COVID, crime doesn't stop. We had a high year of one hundred and seventy-seven investigations. These include anything from burglary, sexual assault, child welfare investigations, arson, death investigation, significant traffic crashes, investigation and computer crimes. We do have one of our detectives, which is specialized trained in forensic computer analysis and cellphone, which did forty-six forensic examinations, which are very lengthy. So that was a lot of work for him that year. Our drug officer, as you can see on page nineteen, is very busy. The Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force in twenty twenty-one, you can see that there were sixteen hundred and thirty-nine arrests. Out of those, you can see what has transformed since two thousand eighteen is that heroin has actually been going down. It's methamphetamine that has increased dramatically here in central and northern Wisconsin. We met with the Attorney General and several others in regards to the problem that we're having with methamphetamines. And we are trying to address those problems, just so you're aware. Let's see here. Let's go to the court services. The court services unit is what you encounter when you come up here in regards to the screening. You can see that on page twenty-three, even though that COVID was in full swing in twenty twenty-one, there still was eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine people screened in the courthouse. And there were one hundred and eighty-one knives, seventy-seven other weapons that were discarded as they came through. You can also see the law enforcement actions in regards to up here on the second floor from arrests, warrants, escorts and transports and affrays that go on. Those are all actions that are taken by the court services unit. You can also see that our county board, we had five hundred and thirteen people screened, nine knives, four other weapons that were seized during the county board meetings. Let's see. Communication Center, page twenty-five. Thankfully, last year or beginning, yeah, last year, we got the one of the nighttime supervision positions that were approved by the county board. So thank you very much because that is very helpful in regards to implementation of some stability in our communication center. In two thousand twenty-one, we are still under the standard of ten seconds for every call, even the nine-one calls, which is very impressive when you look at these calls coming in rapidly in real tragic situations. So kudos to our dispatch for such a job that they do. There were one hundred and ten, one hundred and ten thousand telephone calls received at the telecommunication center during this period. And out of those, there was ninety-three thousand three hundred and sixty-six emergent calls and fifty-one thousand non-emergent calls. So I said that wrong. I apologize. I think there was more calls during that time. This is dramatically increased from two thousand twenty because of the COVID. But as you can see, that just because there was COVID out there didn't stop the calls and the emergent calls that were going out to the sheriff's office. In addition to the phone calls, the communication techs also monitor and respond over twenty radio channels. And as you can see on the bottom of the page, those are all things that they have to monitor while they're on the telephone calls so that they can, if somebody's calling for help or they need assistance out there, they are able to multitask to do those. And then on page twenty-six, it talks about being fully staffed in the two thousand ten study. I'm going to keep reverting to that with every county board every time I talk about this because we are still three short in our communication center. Just trying to get people is a challenge. But to get that to fully staffed at sixteen, which is still understaffed, what the study states we should have, is concerning. I will tell you that the surrounding counties are struggling, just like Portage County. I talked with some of the to the north and and also to the to the west. I'm concerned on the trend in regards to our hiring and our applicants. But I'm hopeful that we can have some resolutions in the future, especially with the wage study. Page thirty-one, our emergency management. The sheriff's office emergency management are responsible to ensure citizens will be prepared to cope with emergencies, natural and man-made, develop systems, minimize effects on civilian population and deal with immediate emergency conditions created by disasters and emergency repairs and restoration of vital public utilities, facilities and Portage County Joint Action Emergency Management Ordinance. These guys are busy and I will tell you, my deputy EM just announced that he is leaving. So we will be searching for a deputy emergency management coming up because these are plans that we have not updated, implemented and had training on in years. And they have taken the bull by the horns and we have been doing a lot of things that are necessity. So I'm looking forward to to getting somebody in there to assist with Bob again. But these, you can see all the things that they've done in regards to exercises, the updates that they've done through the past year and also the training and disaster plans that they've coordinated with. So I know they have they have great contacts out in the community in regards to this and have worked with people that had disasters and trying to recruit funds for them. Let's see. Emergency Medical Services. Back in two thousand eighteen, it came under the sheriff's office as my fifth division. I think it's been going very well. We have a excellent emergency medical service coordinator who's been working diligent in regards to making contacts and working with the providers that are out there. We've had a transition with the hospital now in regards to Aspiris taking over. So we are working out some speed bumps as we speak. But those are going extremely well and the emergency medical service coordinator has been doing wonderful with the EMR groups out in the county in regards to giving them skills and also training through our emergency director. As you can see, in two thousand twenty-one, the total calls for service have always increased year by year. Total calls went up to three thousand five hundred and seventy-six. And then on the next page, you can also see that our revenue for which Portage County charges, which to me is not an indicator, but has also gone up because of the call service. So we are, we are looking and also always recruiting for the EMR groups. On page thirty-eight, you can see all the different emergency EMR groups that are out there. We're doing, you know, going out to fairs, trying to get people interested in this so that they take the time because it's very hard to find people to go out and actually volunteer or take the time. And, you know, to be real honest with you, these EMR groups deal with the same as what law enforcement does on a day-to-day basis, seeing some things that a lot of people don't want to see. So they're they're usually the first ones responding, first ones there before we get there and then the ambulance. So if you know anybody and they're looking in those areas, send them in. Let's see. I know I'm trying to go fast. Corrections Division. The Corrections Division, even though twenty-one still had COVID, was increasing dramatically. You can see the jail bed numbers, you know, in the future. But you can also see the transport costs have also gone up. So we are in that that cycle here that for somebody, somebody told me, well, your jail bed numbers are down. Well, we have to keep them down because we take these precautions of the COVID in our jail very seriously. And we don't want to have an outbreak. We don't want somebody to get sick. We we for sure are there to protect our staff and also the inmates. So we have shipped, you know, more and we're at our hundred percent capacity in our jail at this time. And we're shipping more as we speak. So the cumulative cost, when you're talking about the jail, I think is on, I'm skipping ahead here, sorry. It's like twelve, twelve million dollars now since we started shipping. So it's it's adding up quickly and there, I don't see an end in sight until we do something. So that's, that is up to the county board to to look at coming in the future. You can see we've done a lot in regards to the technology improvements. In the in regards to the jail, we wrote some grants. On page forty-three, we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Tech Eighty-four Intercept Body Scammer now. So that when people come into our jail, we can see if they are hiding something that can harm them or an officer. And one item that we found in that way is a gun. Unbelievable that somebody put in one of their orifices. So you wouldn't think of that, but you also think if somebody is actually trying to conceal drugs, some of these drugs, if they rupture, will kill those people. So we are trying to take a very proactive in regards to this by doing some of the above and beyond what some are doing. Also, we got some of the Skytron UV disinfectant robots that I think did outstanding for us in regards to sanitizing our facility. It doesn't just sanitize for COVID, it's sanitized for all different types of diseases and also bedbugs. So I mean, it's a, it's a wonderful addition to our facility. Food services, we've contracted with Subbit. We are very happy with Subbit Jail Food Services and the staff that they bring in. You can also see our health services. We have Southern Health Partners that is in our facility every day with the jail nurse. We bumped that up this last year to full-time forty hours. So we have a full-time nurse. We also have a full-time social worker in there for mental health. So we are, we are what I call above the average of jails in regards to our our programming and also our staffing for mental health and medical. Then you can see on the next couple pages, all the inmate programs. We do a lot of inmate programs in regards to trying to get our inmates back in society and being productive. We also, of course, utilize our electronic monitoring so that we can keep people out there, keep them employed if they're nonviolent offenders and keep them productive in society. As you can see, the average daily population for the adult jail is seventy point four for two thousand twenty-one. And the lengths of stay decrease because of COVID. But our shipping went up from four hundred and fifty-nine thousand to four hundred and sixty-one thousand. And if you look at the EMP, estimated saving for two thousand twenty-one was one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Juvenile detention. Juvenile detention is a real big deal right now because some juvenile detention facilities through the state of Wisconsin are closing due to staffing and we are staying open and we are getting more contracts and getting more kits. So we are, we are getting swamped and we are trying to utilize the space that we have available for the youth throughout the Wisconsin that are needed for the beds. But we are, in two thousand twenty-one, you can see that the average stays are increasing, especially here in Portage County. So we are trying to utilize that and work with counties that we contract with, which now we have two contracts through counties that actually guarantee beds for them. So sometimes they won't have a person, but if they get one and they call in the middle of the night, we have to make room for that person. Let me see. Last but not least, out of the, well, you can see the page fifty-two, it talks about the cost for the transports. If you're interested in regards to year to year and how we figure out the cumulative costs for the transports, the people and things like that. This does not count the cost for mental health trips, by the way. One of these years, I'm going to try to figure it out because I'm trying to figure out the costs that it's costing us to bring somebody to Winnebago, Mendota or Eau Claire and how long it is for two officers. Usually it's about eighteen hours to get placement and and transport. So we are working with the state in regards to coming up with some processes that would alleviate some of this. They did change the process a little bit last year, allowing transport companies to take the person from the hospital instead of law enforcement to hand it over for them to transport. But we have not been able to do a line item. And I'm going to work with Health and Human Services Kim to work on that so that we can come up with a solution maybe for officer sit time. Then last but not least, Records Division. This is probably the lifeblood of our sheriff's office. They do all the work. They make sure everything is sent up to the district attorney's office, reviewed, filed correctly. We have three record specialists, one lead, and then we have a administrative services supervisor. Again, these are imperative for our office and you can see just by their job description and what they do, how important they are for the sheriff's office. That's all I have. Talk quick, went fast. Supervisor Madine.
What's that? Lucas, on page four, you talked about the Detective Bureau and the death investigations. Could you give us a little additional information on the homicides for last year?
Well, any death investigation, especially like the overdoses, traffic accidents, fatalities, we did not, I don't know if we had a fatality last year, I mean, a homicide in the county. I'm sorry, I don't recall on that, but the Detective Bureau deals with all what we call suspicious deaths. And actually, we call them now for any death, just to review if they feel that there's any suspicion. So when when our road officer gets called to somebody's house and it's a, say, elderly gentleman that dies of natural causes, that deputy would handle that call with the medical examiner. But if we go to the scene and there's something, maybe it's a middle-aged person that's good shape and it just doesn't seem right, we're going to call the Detective Bureau to process the scene. And in real major events, we would call in the State Crime Lab if we needed to process a large scene. Good answer. Yep. Supervisor Gayford.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question going back to the Communication Center. You know, you said you had a hard time finding workforce for that and, you know, the specialized skills and characteristics you are. Are there, are there schools, rather technical or colleges in our area, in our school, in our state, I mean, that are equipping people for that kind of work? And that would apply to the Emergency Management Services too. I mean, workforce is a problem everywhere, but this seems like it's kind of a chronic problem for you. And is there any kind of, you know, improvement on the horizon in that area?
Well, the tech colleges, we're looking at doing some kind of academy for communications. Pushback from half the sheriffs, pushback because of the length of time that it would take to train and certify a communication specialist. Because if you take them away from the job for two weeks or four weeks, now now you're not able to. And if you mandated that training, then then you're talking that there would be a timeframe and a crunch. So if I have right now, say fifteen employees and I got to get them through in two years, that that's going to be very hardship on Portage County because we're not going to be able to do that. They have talked about making some formalized training in regards to doing that, but they have not pushed forward with it at this time. But you also have to look at it, and I'm going to be real honest. Somebody can go to a place and work for twenty dollars an hour, which that's what my comp people make, and not work nights, weekends, holidays and have people yelling at them. So it's getting harder to do. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a chore, but we are, we are filling as fast as we can. And we're, I don't say we ever compromise on a hire because it's your, it's your life on the line.
Well, still, it would be, it would be good to think that there's some awareness of this at the, at the level of, you know, people can major in law enforcement, right? And they can major in in things like social work that if the people doing the educating were more aware of this, it's a priorities thing, I think, you know, that I don't see a need for Emergency Management Services to going down anytime in the future, you know what I'm saying? So.
The last hires, the last several hires have been law enforcement officers that couldn't, didn't want to be on the road or fire personnel, EMTs, people like that, that that really want to give to the community, back to the community and and take that up. But there is, there's definitely a lot of talk about the training. I just came back from the, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Manager of Sheriffs, seventy-two sheriffs. And that has been our contentious for a long time, that we want to get some standardized training, at least a two-week training to have them go through prior to being even hired, come in to see if that's something they're going to be able, they want to do. So.
It'd be great if you could hire people that came in already with that skill set because they had learned it in school.
Yeah. You know, everybody has different software, everything like that. It's just a matter of the multitasking. Can you, can you type? Can you answer the phone? Can you do all these things and stuff like that?
So Sheriff, one of the things that I had heard from the different public safety meetings in that position was, was it some of the the mental part of it, where the people taking the calls and stuff, not so much the training, but just the job itself? Was that?
Yeah, I mean, the the critical debrief on these situations and we forget, we do. We forget about the communications because last thing they hear is an officer yelling for help and they don't know the outcome. They're the last to know. So that sitting there waiting, that anticipation, is the officer okay? Is everybody okay? And and we've really tried to be better in regards to letting the dispatch know right away that, you know, everything's good and then have them in on the critical debrief in regards to what happened and how the pieces all fit together. Because otherwise, the mind wanders and they, they have a very tough time. Because otherwise, the mind wanders and they, they have a, a very tough time.
That, I think that's, that's the part that they won't be able to teach. The person has to have that, that mindset. So uh Supervisor Rakowski.
Just like to thank Sheriff Lucas for his death report. It seems like a lot of the positions, if you don't hear something from, then it's a good thing. You know, they're doing their job and the public probably doesn't even know what their role is. My appeal today is for EMTs. It's not just for people that live in the rural areas. Whenever you leave Stevens Point, you may need these people. These will be the first people that you will see and they will save lives.
So they do. Hey, I, I, I appeal that every day because I, I live out down by Elm and everybody knows that. I mean, I'm a very strong supporter of those because as soon as that call comes out, they're answering that call. No matter what the gas prices are, they're there, they're giving the, your blood pressure, your notice, eh, everything to the ambulance. They're putting on a tourniquet if needed, they're giving you information, they're giving you the epinephrine if you're having an allergic rea- I mean, they're, they can administer a lot of things, they have that capability and they're trained in it. And we need to have more people out there that are willing to uh wake up in the middle of the night and, and step up.
And there's, there's also legislation looking at that, isn't there, Mike? There's a couple of different things where they're trying to uh encourage or incentivize uh people to be uh these EMS uh or EMTs or in the outside rural area.
I, I believe on the uh ARPA funds, the governor is looking at some type of incentive um for EMT signing and for wage increase because right now they get a stipend for going out. I, I mean, it's, it's nothing. I don't, I, maybe you know.
And I, it's, it's very little.
Yeah. Supervisor Pataki.
I think I said this before, but I, the uh, the Sheriff's Department still runs a citizens' law enforcement academy. So you, you looked at this report, if you go to that academy, you're gonna be able to see exactly what the sheriff does and why they do what they do, all right? Uh you'll be able to shoot their guns, you'll be able to drive, I think you can drive the squad car.
Yup, and get tased.
Uh, and get tased, yeah? It, it'll believe me, that's, I, I had that. And when I got shot in the back, I never felt better in my life for about two or three months, so.
And we enjoyed it.
Please, yeah, if there, if you get a chance to go to it, go to it, you're gonna learn a lot.
Anybody else have any more comments, questions? Supervisor Robbie.
I just wanna thank the sheriff for his report, but also is a good reminder of the, such a wide range of responsibilities in that position. And I certainly um appreciate all you do in that position uh to ensure that we are um meeting the standards that we have to and for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And last thing I'll say is I have an excellent staff that make me look good. Because what this report does is, is my staff gets all this information in a timely manner, um gets all the stats and, and things that all the supervisors ask me, and we correlate this every year. But if it wasn't for them, um putting this effort into uh our annual report, it, it wouldn't be this productive. So thanks to outstanding staff. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
I would also like to thank Sheriff Lucas for his report and also a thanks out to him and his staff. We meet those deputies out in the rural community all the time and each and every one of them are very friendly, professional individuals. And I would like to thank each and every one of them for taking the time to stop and chat with us when they see us or to wave us down, say, hey, anything going on in the community? So uh hats off to you, Mike, and, and everybody who works with you.
Oh, pass it along. Thank you. Do they have the lights on when they stop to chat with you, Barry?
Only when I see them.
I would plead the fifth on it.
You do.
Well, there. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time. With such comments reasonable, the county board chair has set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Anybody from the public care to speak? Mr. Ayden?
Number seventeen.
Number seventeen. Got it? Anyone else? All right. Uh confirmation of county, county executives' appointments. If there is no objections, I'll take both of them together. Seeing no objections. It's the appointment of the Chief Medical Examiner, Heather Schultz, and then uh Planning and Zoning Director, Tim Reed, to the Traffic Safety Commission for the remainder of their current term and for the next four-year term expiring April twenty, twenty twenty-six. Motion by Supervisor Pataki. Seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Town, uh number eight, Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amending the Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amending Dishar Property.
Resolution number two zero three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves account plan amendment for the Dishar property.
Motion by Supervisor Merle, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Uden property.
Resolution number two zero four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves account plan amendment for the Uden property.
Sorry. I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Gussel. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amending and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Garsky property.
Resolution number two zero five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves account plan amendment for the Garsky property.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, Town of Hall Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Jablonsky and Nappawak, uh Nappawaki?
Nappawak.
Property.
Resolution number two zero six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves account plan amendment for those two properties.
You didn't wanna try it, huh?
No.
Very smart.
I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Robbie. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Uh Lamar property.
Resolution number two zero seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves account plan amendment for the Lamar property.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Oppo- opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, uh Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Wreshes, Wreshes?
Richa.
Richa. Richa, thank you. Property.
Resolution number two zero eight, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a zoning ordinance map amendment for the Richa property.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen, rescinding resolution number one eight eight dash two zero two zero dash two zero two two, approved on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two and retaining passport acceptance agency responsibilities with the clerk of court's office.
Resolution number two zero nine, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Judicial General Government Committee. This resolution rescinds a previously adopted resolution and approves the clerk of court's office to retain the passport issuance duties.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Discussion. Does everybody understand what had happened here or have a good understanding why it's going back? It's unfortunate, but uh because Cindy's here too. Uh but it is, as my understanding, it is because of the uh Register of Deeds Office issues birth certificates and they can't have passports and birth certificates in the same office.
Interesting.
All right.
Statutory?
Yes.
Federal.
Federal. Whoa. Any other discussion? All those in favor of, let's say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen, elected officials' compensation for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six term for clerk of courts.
Resolution number two ten, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution sets the compensation for the clerk of courts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six term.
Motion by Supervisor Reeser and seconded by uh Supervisor Zastro. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Or just.
Who is the other no? Maresi, Johnson.
Anhega. Okay, so three no's.
Three no's. Motion carries. Number sixteen, elected officials' compensation for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-six term for sheriff.
Resolution number two eleven, twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution sets the compensation for sheriff for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six term.
Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So just two?
Just two.
Gutten Johnson.
Hmm. Motion passes. Number seventeen, authorizing an agreement with Tegra Group Inc. For an owner, owner's representative for develop a long-term master facility plan for the construction of a new government facility.
Resolution number two twelve, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Space and Properties and Finance Committees. This resolution authorizes an agreement with Tegra for owner's representative services.
Mr. Ayden, you wanted to speak on this? And just to remind you, three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dave Ayden, one thousand eight Matilda Street. Just basically a question that would be uh subcontracting Tegra Group to, as a liaison for uh, uh future planning for government facilities, for example, a Justice Works Center potentially? Is that what we're looking at here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are uh, we're gonna have uh, are the three of you gonna talk? Don, Don and Chris and Chris? Oh, I need a motion, put it on the floor, folks. Uh, motion by Supervisor uh Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Supervisor Jankowski.
I'm chair of the Space and Properties Committee, so I was designated to introduce this. Basically, if you look at the resolution, it is to develop a long-range master facilities plan for construction of new government facilities. What we've been doing over the last year or so, we've studied all the buildings. We've gone through with the Space and Properties Committee and several of the people, other supervisors have been with us and we've looked at the buildings. We've put together some reports. We know that the courthouse, the building that we're sitting in here right now, was built sixty-some years ago. The heating and ventilating and air conditioning is in terrible shape. We had an estimate about three years ago of three million dollars plus to redo that. We know the windows, they're all single-pane, they're not insulated, they all need to be replaced. The electrical, which was designed in nineteen fifty-some, doesn't meet all the standards that are out there right now. We put a lot of strain on that equipment as a result of all the electrical components that we've added, the computers and the different things. All that needs to be done. The plumbing in this building has created some problems for us. We've got some of the pipes inside the walls that are decaying. We've had pipes in the basement floor that uh do the sewer return out to the street. Those that failed, clogged, broke down. All the piping needs to be looked at. Just looking at some of the quick items, we feel that there's more than five million dollars in repairs that needs to be done to this building. Our next problem is the city of Stevens Point owes twenty-seven percent of this building. We were advised after the last Space and Properties Committee by the mayor that the city may not be able to pay their twenty-seven percent. So we need to do some planning. We need to do some refining of the plans for this building. We looked at the jail, two years ago, we had a twenty-seven million dollar bid, or, or not a bid, a quote, to bring that building up to standard. It was built in nineteen ninety. It does not meet our standards, it does not meet the state uh, the standards for jails. And we're in trouble with some of the things such as the jail cell doors, locks are wearing out. Plumbing is decaying. We can't get parts to replace the special plum, plumbing that is necessary in the holding cells. We need to do something. That twenty-seven million dollar uh quote was two years ago. Things have gone up, so we're looking probably about thirty million dollars to rebuild that building. If we do that, it's fine, but we lose jail beds. We lose some of the beds because of the design. We won't be able to handle the prisoners that we are currently having to house. The annex, which is across the street that some of us have been in many times, that building's twenty years ago, old. I remember twenty years ago when we were building that building. You can't think of some of the things that need to be replaced now. Mechanical, some of the other things that are starting to wear out. Over the years, we've let all these things go downhill. We're at a critical point right now. We have some major problems. Some of the things that we're going to have to address and they have to be addressed in the very near future, whether we build a new building or we rebuild these buildings. This building, the courthouse, was looked at. If we were to rebuild this as a courthouse, we cannot do it. The states, the United States Supreme Court standards would not give us the room, the exits and the things that we need to build a current, up-to-date and standard jail, uh courthouse, I'm sorry. So looking at all these things, these things are failing for us. And we've been kicking them down the road for several years. I have a list of some of the projects that we've looked at since nineteen ninety, when the jail opened across the street. Ninety-five, we added some juvenile housing in that building. Ninety-six, we had Germer Home, they did a study on space needs. Ninety-nine, we did a study by Kimmy, a jail assessment study. We talked about building a new facility, a two-hundred-bed facility. All these things got shot down when we looked at them and there were questions that came up. What were the costs? Are these the specific things we should be doing? Are we in the right location? Have we selected all these things? Over the years, we did thirteen studies on these buildings, thirteen studies. We paid in excess of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in studies. That's what studies cost us. We have time invested by our staff. We had various people that directed this over the time. We had Planning and Zoning Director did some of this. The second Planning and Zoning Director directed this. The Sheriff's Department, one of their ja- uh, their jail captains spent numerous hours getting all these numbers together over these years. So that four hundred and fifty, you could probably multiply that by another uh two percent, another fifty percent, so you'd be up a million dollars with our costs that are involved in that. We keep pushing this down the street. Now is the time to do something. What are we going to do with this study? This study is a five-phase study. We're looking at giving us in the next six months to twelve months, what does this county need? Where should this building be built? How should it be built? And a potential cost. Some of those questions have come up in all our studies as we looked at them over the years. They got pushed aside because we couldn't come up with something. Here, we're gonna hire an outside individual to take our thirteen studies, look at them, come back to us and say, this is what Portage- "This is what Portage County needs." And we have to look at it. Today, we're voting on phase one and two, which is the planning phase. There are three more phases that you would be looking at over the years. So within a year, we will be bringing back phase one and two to this board to decide, what do we do? Where do we go? And how do we do it? Those are very important questions. We can't depend on our staff to accomplish this. They have other tasks and things to do. They're constantly working on their own projects, we don't have the expertise nor the knowledge. That's why the owner's rep would be our representative through the whole project. Again, we're doing emergency fixes. We're making some decisions off the hip to cover these costs and these needs. But we need to have a plan, and that's what this is for. Thank you.
I've attended the Space and Property meetings a number of times when they talk about capital improvements or any of the other projects that need to be done on these buildings. And the thing that I always hear is that we postpone stuff because we don't know what we're going to do. We've talked about repairs and things that we know are there, and they need to be done. And then it comes up, well, we don't know what we're gonna do yet. We don't want to spend money on it because it may be throwing good money after bad, which is true. But we can't keep doing it. There's so many things that need to be looked at. And these folks, you know, and everybody has good intentions, but when we start talking about this, we've got twenty-five people helping me design this or helping everybody design this, that's where we need the professionals that will come in and say, those are, when we're talking to the other twenty-five planners and zoning, planning in this project, and say, this is why it's important. This is what you need, and the reasons why. And those are the arguments that we can have with those folks, but they're and they're the ones that are gonna help guide us. This is important, and I hate throwing, just like the rest of you, but I'm here to tell you that we need help in this, and we need the professionals to help us, guide us, because this problem's not going away. And as Don had stated, the plumbing and stuff in these buildings, terrible. The HVAC is non-existent, there's no screens for these, these are the original windows, as I understand it, and there's no screens for them, they're all lost, they don't know where they went to, so.
Over fifty years, the efficiency of the windows has gone way down, down, and we're not getting what we need out of them.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
And thank you Supervisor Jankowski, I would like to thank you personally and every member of that Space and Properties Committee. I know this has been a long road. I just hope when we get the study done, that this body has the courage to move it forward. And thank you again so much.
Supervisor Reese.
I'm wondering if there's an assumption that we would use Tegra to move ahead on the other phases, if this is a five-phase approach. Has there been any discussion about that?
Yeah, essentially, the five phases would be sort of from the phase one and two planning to the end of construction. So this portion is just getting you a master facility plan that proceeds at the pace that this body moves at to say, okay, after phase two, this is the direction you want to move in, it's that piece, or this piece, or renovate everything, whatever it is. You have a plan in place, and then you move the first piece hypothetically, and then the rest of the plan is there for future boards, because it'll probably be a chunk of time to get all the pieces in order, if you will. But yeah, for the, for this particular overall project, the first phases are generating that plan and getting the board to a decision point about what direction does it want to head in. And then after that, there's additional phases, we bring more people in, you'd have a construction manager at risk, working with the architect and the owner's rep and the county on whatever that piece was. And then there's two stages before you get to construction documents and break ground, so. So yes, Tegra would be with you for the entirety of whatever it is. This today before you is only that first two stages of the overall.
And it would make sense to stay with them if, unless we have some kind of unforeseen problems with them, because they would have all the knowledge of the project from the start.
Absolutely agreed, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Do we know a timeline for completion of phase two, phase one and phase two?
We're looking at the next six months to twelve months to get everything together. All these reports that I spoke about, they will use those to develop that. The reports that we did when we toured the buildings, those will all be used. They will look at the different things, the different locations, and they'll come up with a plan that should meet Portage County's needs.
And the reason I ask that question is because this is like deja vu, this has happened before. We get going out of the gate, we're ready to go, we're ready to get plans, we're ready to build, and then the county board changes. And that's why I would like to see it pushed to a six-month timeline as quick as they could. And I realize we have to work at the pace they can work at, but the faster they do, and I still want them to do a thorough job, but the faster they do it and they get it in front of this next board, the more time. Otherwise, we keep running up to that, oh, we're gonna have a different board, and it's happened before, so I would just, as quick as they could do it would be the best possible.
It's a good point, that I think, back to Barry's point, is that we can move as fast as you all want to move. So if we're setting the parameters for what's most important, for whatever the pieces are, and then the professionals bring you back and say, this is what that looks like, that's the appropriate way to move this forward, and we don't get bogged down in some of the sort of peripheral questions, or, you know, which direction is it facing, and things like that, which are all fine to ask, but at the same time, get us, pull us away from the core issues, which we keep talking about. So if the county board said, this is what we want, we want it in six months, and in eight months, we want to do this, then Tegra is prepared to move as fast as you want to move.
And one thing I want to remind everybody is on this, when we're starting to allocate big funds for this, they need seventy-five percent of the board's approval. And there didn't seem to be that before, so Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I too express my appreciation to the Space and Properties Committee, not only the current one, but all the ones in the past, because there've been a lot of people and a lot of studies and no action. As they move forward, and I hope this is the last thing I'll probably say as a county board supervisor, but I'm gonna say it again. I remember having a conversation with Judge Flugard, just as he was getting ready to retire, I saw him out in the community. And we are both very supportive of the idea of a justice center campus that is focused on restorative justice for not only, of course, the victims, but to restore the, those offenders back to whole, so they can become productive parts of our community. There are certainly some that need to always be kept behind bars. There are some that need supportive services, whether it's AODA, mental health services. All of those things have to be a part of how we move forward with a justice center to ensure that we're building community and not just locking people away. For a while, I've worked on a number, and I volunteered for these, I didn't receive any compensation as a county board supervisor, but volunteered to serve on a number of committees that both Judge Fleishower and Judge Egan, as well as the district attorney, put together related to different ways that we can look at trying to provide corrections, whether it's community-based corrections, programming, a lot of other things. So I truly hope as whatever the county board looks like in the future, and I won't stop advocating on this, I truly hope that this comes into the equation of what this future facility looks like. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Mua.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, I'm all for the research, I do want us to move forward. I, you know, do want to just put on record and note, I want to know what, what kind of history this research firm actually has with making sure that they're reaching most impacted communities and getting data from the Sheriff's Department as far as demographics of those most incarcerated, so that we're making sure that whatever, whatever research you're doing, or that those communities have good input in this as well, and that we don't do what we've been historically doing, is posting up and having meetings here and hoping that communities come, but that there is good effort put into reaching those communities that are most impacted and figuring out those the jail data.
What we did is we interviewed three specific firms that RFP'd, that they were interested in being our contractor. We looked at all three of them. We had different feelings on one or two of them, and this one came out on top. We did a review of what they've done in the past, and they've done excellent throughout the Midwest here, trying to accomplish what we're trying to do here. They seem to be responsive to what we're looking for. They'll take our information, they'll take any other information that we can produce, that'll all be put together, and they will help us make a decision.
Anybody else? Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Splinter.
I do have a copy of the request for proposals, and then the selected group, Tegra. And the primary person who would be working as the manager is, I thought my name was Dick Strasberg. I just want to read to you what some of his, some of the comments were from some of the groups that he represented. And I think the most important one is, I'll just go to one. He was the front-end project setup, this is from the community. Community and city council involvement developed phasing plans and strategic plans to engage the community and council. And that's his forte that we saw, that would be the manager, that would be the primary individual working with us. And so we did look at three groups, and that was done internally, but this is the one that was presented to us. And I am really pleased with them, with that group and their primary people.
Supervisor Splinter.
I think the mission statement of everyone sitting here in this body is to come to common sense solutions for the county in a nonpartisan manner. Having an owner's rep will give us that independent third party that is, that deals with these projects time and over and over. We can handle the small stuff, but when we start spending the taxpayers' money in a big way, we need to get an independent third party to sit down, look at what we have, and make the recommendation as to what makes the most sense. And if we do that in a timely manner and get back information, and they can tell us like it is, we're not gonna bias them one way or another, this is what we have and what do you recommend? And then, as a body, we can, in a nonpartisan, unbiased way, look at what the professionals are saying and make a solid, common sense decision for our county. So this is the first step in doing that, and hopefully, we can move it along and get things taken care of, because everything is, as time goes on, buildings and people tend to fall apart, so. It's, we need, like, you need to go to the doctor, we need a few building doctors to take a look at what we have here, so. I'm all in favor of this, and I appreciate anybody's support.
Anybody else? Supervisor Robbie.
I just wanted to support what Supervisor Splinter said. I think everybody here wants to move forward, I'm not sure that most of us know what that looks like. And if we continue to discuss amongst ourselves as non-experts, non-professionals, I think it's very unproductive. And this is because it's an opportunity to move forward with some clarity by people who, as you indicated, Mike, are nonpartisan. They don't have a skin in the game, they're just doing what they do best, and I think this is a great idea. Regardless of how much money we spent in the past and the bumps along the way, if we're gonna move forward, and I think we all want to, this is the best way and maybe the only way that we're gonna move forward. So I really, I support it, and I hope our bail says as well.
We cannot take an approach of doing nothing. Doing nothing means we need to make some repairs on these buildings, and that's gonna be very costly. So we need to take some action to complete our planning.
There's a cost associated with not with doing nothing, and we just realized probably a really big bump right now had we been building this or built it a few years ago with the costs of materials. Supervisor Pataki.
We first started talking about building your jail thirty-one years ago, folks, thirty-one years ago. During that time, I believe the first time we got the cost figure, it was like twenty-seven million dollars. Now, depending on what we build and how big it is, we're gonna be into the fifties and sixties, okay? So we could have had what we wanted thirty-one years ago for twenty-seven million dollars, so let's not wait.
Don, what did it say to update? Was twenty-six million a few years ago?
Twenty-seven million to update the existing jail, and that was two years ago. Twenty-seven million. And that reduces our bed count, plus it has some other effects that are not really suggestible.
Anybody else? Supervisor Dodge.
I just think we have to approve this today because right now, we're singing to the choir. Next month, you will have, I don't know how many new supervisors, or maybe not until May. But the point is, you need to gather all the information that we have gotten over the years, have someone that knows what they're doing evaluate it, come to the county board. There's gonna be people that have many questions, hopefully, they can be answered. Dennis Robbie always had the question, now you need to give us some idea of how much this is gonna cost. And I don't think Dennis would disagree with me. But we do need some idea of what each phase, what a justice or a courthouse would cost, or a jail would cost. Those kinds of things, we don't have the staff to provide that information. We need to bring somebody in that knows what they're doing, and then explain to all of us, including the new supervisors, why we need to move forward.
Anybody else?
Just one comment. I was going to put on your desks the outline of what we have had for a project timeline, what we've done over the last thirty years on the jail, but I was told that was an open means violation, so now that I presented it here, anybody wants a copy? I have copies to give everybody. I will ask that the county clerk places on the website, on our, and possibly also on our, as an email to you tomorrow morning, so.
Yep, she's, okay. Any other questions of us?
She's nodding her head, yes, Don.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
And I think, Don, you've been in this since the beginning from the twenty, thirty years of this too, is that?
I came on the board in nineteen ninety-five, and we were talking space at that time, and I've been in space and property since then. I've taken a few beatings on it.
You better work a little harder.
So what I did, I had hearing when I started.
Supervisor Robbie that said you gotta work harder. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, everybody. Number eighteen. Authorizing state and local fiscal recovery funds program, projects, and subsequent budget adjustments.
Resolution number two-thirteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes SLFR programs and a budget adjustment. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Lottick, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion, and Jenny would like to make a comment, Jenny?
Yes, so at your last board meeting, you had authorized the process for the state and local fiscal recovery fund to go through. So this is what it will look like going forward with the standing resolution and the projects that the Finance Committee reviews that has come through them, through other committees, for your approval has recommended. On the attachment, there is one thing that has changed since we adopted this at the Finance Committee level because of some information that we received. One of the projects that's on the listing, some of these projects have already been approved. Um, the only projects that you're approving would be the new projects that would be identified in the second page that say not yet approved for tonight. Um, and I do apologize. I realize that the print was much bigger on my screen when I prepared this, so in your packets, it probably is fairly small. Um, but the the project that needs some adjustment is the CWA Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant Match. Um, that's the last project listed on the attachment. And it's listed as being funded through the uh negative economic impact stream under the uh expenditure category of um aid to tourism, travel, or hospitality. While it does meet that category, um, the airport is applying for a grant and has requested the match um for that grant um from the county. And our intent was to use state and local fiscal recovery funds as that match. The match amount is a hundred and five thousand dollars. However, because it is federal money and because we are applying for a federal grant, um typically, you are not allowed to use federal money to match federal grants. However, there is a provision within the state local recovery funds that allow you under the category of provisional government services to do so. Now, we're still pending final approval with the grantor to allow the federal dollars as federal match. They've kind of given us preliminary approval. Um, but in order to do so, we would have to put the program under that category. We would not be able to use the federal match component under the category of aid um for tourism, even though airport is a tourism-related um project. So that would uh need to change um that category, um, but that would be the only thing in relationship to the project that would change. Any questions on why that is?
Do you need us to make an amendment here of anything?
Um, just to add, uh, to, uh, ref, I don't know if it needs to be a formal amendment, but to reference the reporting category change from from uh negative economic impact to provisional government services, if the board is fine with that.
Dave. What are you, I'm referring to you, how you know, how we should proceed against this.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's really more for how we report it. I just wanted you to be aware of how we are using the money and the restrictions on the reporting. And we can't report it in that category.
Okay, so it's Supervisor Reece, sir.
I would move to make that amendment if we need it uh on the recording side.
Dave, are we gonna? Hold on a second.
Sure.
I think it's more or less because it's an attachment and it's uh, but it's included as as an example in the resolution. Yeah, and we we can include, yeah, maybe that's the way to go, Dave, is to include it in the minutes, the language that Jenny had uh to make sure that uh the body has been informed of it.
I was just looking to see, is the is the attachment referenced in the resolution at all?
I think it is. I think it is. And so that the changes that would need to essentially happen is it would need to mirror the project above it um in reference to the deputy position. The first column would need to indicate revenue replacement on the first page of the attachment. And the first column on the second page or the, excuse me, the last column of the second page would be, you know, government services. Those are the two change. Everything else stays the same.
I don't think we need an amendment to change the attachment the way it's worded here in the fiscal note.
Make sure that the minutes reflected Jenny had spoken about it and informed the body. Everybody fine? Okay. Supervisor Supervisor Reece, would you like to withdraw your motion?
I wouldn't. Thank you.
All right. Back to the original resolution. Jenny, you didn't have any more?
No, unless there's any questions.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, number nineteen, authorizing twenty twenty-two budget amendments and transfers.
Resolution number two fourteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes a twenty twenty-two budget adjustment for the sheriff's office. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. Jenny?
I just wanted to um kind of point out for the board, um, Finance Committee has discussed this, and uh, we've discussed it in a couple other areas, but we're trying to simplify the budget amendment process a little bit. Um, we've uh created kind of a standing monthly resolution um and a form to go with budget amendments to make the necessary appropriations changes. Um, so we're going to kind of trial this, see how it works. This kind of came out of some of our policy planning meetings and and uh budget policy meetings. Um, but one of the things that this does is it doesn't change any policies right now that the county has. It still follows the ordinance. Um, but it would essentially, if we had more than one budget amendment for this month, it would um be one resolution that would have multiple budget amendments associated with it. So this body is getting less resolutions on budget amendments. Um, you're still getting the detail in the budget amendment form, which describes the budget amendment um and what it's for and why. Um, the budget amendment that you have tonight is is a um a simple uh budget amendment between years. It's a donated money that we in twenty twenty-one. We thought we were going to spend it in twenty twenty-one. We couldn't get the purchase done before the end of the fiscal year. We have to carry that money forward into twenty twenty-two. It just seems like a lot sometimes to write a resolution every time something like that happens. So this allows the department to kind of summarize that, still get approvals from their committees and so on. And then we will gather those up and bring one resolution forward to each board meeting um with all the necessary attachments for those budget amendments for this body to entertain. It also provides us with the required information we need to make those budget amendments in our accounting system and track them as well. So I just wanted to point out kind of the change in the operational process and and just reassure you, it doesn't change any policy um that we have in place. We're still following the ordinance. It still requires all the committee approvals. It's just happening in a little different fashion.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last item, I just wanted to uh make this opportunity to thank everybody who has been in this last body. We made it through COVID nineteen. Uh, we're we're the group that was elected in the early start of it, and now we've gotten on the other side. I want to thank those uh folks that uh won't be joining us or will not be uh going forward. Uh, thank you for your service and uh the opportunity to uh meet some new people and make some new friends and those people that were with us in the past. Uh, those supervisors, thank you. And uh also to uh let you know that this is uh our county clerk, uh Finland's last county board. Uh, she has turned in her resignation. Heading back home uh to uh work in a much smaller community. So uh, we uh, we're very uh lucky to have her the ti- the time we did. She did an outstanding job, uh, and I would uh hope everybody would join me in in thanking her, so.
Mr. Chair. Before. I didn't really want to say anything, but I just want to say thank you. Um, I really appreciate, sorry. Appreciate all your support, and it was great working with all of you, and it was a very hard decision, but um, I'm excited to go back home to be closer to family, and I have a new job opportunity that I'm excited about um to work for the town of Grand Chute as their town clerk, so I'll still be working in government, but I will miss all of you, so thank you.
I told her she could watch us, but she said it's the same night. I should have to record it then. You call it Survivor. Yeah. All right, uh, take him Supervisor Neville.
I would, I would like to offer sincere thanks to our county executive, who will not be our county executive. I think he's done an outstanding job to have served on this board while he was the county executive. Thank you.
I would echo that, thank you. And lastly, those folks, I wish you all good luck and good health in your uh your endeavors. So I will take a motion to adjourn this body for the last time. Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Reece. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.